Good morning. It is 10:02. It is April 22nd. We will now have the Montague County Commission meeting. Call to order. Mr. Eldon Callan is not here today. Mr. Ed Hawkins?
Here.
Tom Bloom, here. At this time, I ask for a moment of silence if you stand, please, and then pledge to the Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're about to have consent approval, but I'd like to welcome WVU Political Science 220 class here, and hopefully if you have any questions at any time, feel free to ask them. Right now, we'll have consent and approval.
There are no exonerations today. We have the fiduciary orders of April 22nd and the first quarterly report for Cynthia Vaughn Stafford, minutes of April 1st and 8th. Vouchers: General County Fund $223,619.95, General County Fund Purchasing Card $18,182.61, Coal Severance Fund $212.43, Camp Muffley $171.07, Chestnut Ridge Park $324.93, Mason-Dixon Park $170.35, Mason-Dixon Park Purchasing Card $164.18, Magistrate Court Fund $53.50, Home Confinement Fund $2,0564.96, 911 Purchasing Card $103.63, 911 Cash Fund $3,337.08, for a total of $248,904.69. And there's one budget revision for the Extension Office to cover line items in the red. It's moving $94 from 412 to 11 to 219, $120 from 211 to 222, and $502 from 230 to 219.
Motion to approve.
It's, and I second, it's been properly moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Okay. As we change the meeting around for this year, we now have comments from the public. Any person who'd like to speak can stand, say whatever they want, and they will have three minutes, and if they would just give their name and their address, I'll open this public hearing open. As we usually have so many people to discuss it, major issues. I'll ask one more time. Okay. Close the meeting. I like that. Okay. At this time, we will have Holly introduced from Chestnut Ridge Park Superintendent, a new employee. You can tell Holly to come on in. She's up. Oh, there you are.
Bring her in.
You're right. You can't miss it.
I didn't want you guys to miss me. The office manager is not here, she was stuck behind an accident, but she said officially she'll be here.
Okay.
But these are the seasonals for this year. This is Mr. Butch. He is going to be maintenance/ranger/whatever we need him to be as he stated, and this is our new cleaning person for the season.
Hi.
Jocelyn. Jocelyn, I'm sorry.
And Jocelyn, what's your last name?
Mitchell.
Mitchell. Okay. And just because we know you have the, who is the third person so we can officially?
Blair Furness.
Blair Furness.
Yes, I'm not way out there until she gets here.
Okay, yeah, I mean, do understand that. Okay, so we have three officials to be approved, and how, what is your?
Motion to approve the employment.
Second, it's been properly moved and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It passes. Welcome. Thank you. Look forward to seeing the park this summer, and hopefully the weather will warm up and we'll actually be able to have some nice weather. Y'all have a great day. Thank you.
Holly, does payroll have their information?
We're gonna go down.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Renetta, grants.
Oh, she's here.
Oh, good.
She's here.
Okay. Why don't Blair, why don't you come on? Hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Where was the accident at, or?
No, it was not an accident. There was a police officer right off of the mile ground and with a tow truck, and he was just, I felt bad for him. He didn't have his rain gear on or anything.
Oh, he was outside?
Yeah, standing out there without anything, and then it started hailing up on the mountain.
Yes. Well, we've just approved you and welcome, and we look forward to seeing some really nice things out at the park.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a great day.
You too.
Okay. Renetta, what kind of grant some money are we gonna get?
Two items for reimbursement today.
Okay.
The first is the JABG grant for MEYSP for March of 2015, 201941.
Good.
And also the HUD grant, which is the Community Development Block Grant, also for MEYSP through the city of Morgantown, $919 and 2 cents for March.
Motion to approve the signature by the President.
Second, it's been properly moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Great. We will hold off at the hearing for 11, since we have to wait till 11 o'clock anyway, and I hear we're gonna have a large group of people for that, so why don't we do the rest of the business, and then we will break and then come back, and that will allow the students to leave and anyone else. Okay, correspondence, requisition for payment from Star City Tiff.
This is payment number 12, the amount of $2,077 to be dispersed as indicated on Schedule 1, and this goes to CTL Engineering for expenses related to the improvement of Star City.
Motion to approve.
Second, it's been properly moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Second, we have a letter from the Westside Civic Center. Ruth Spangler is president of the Westside Civic Club in Westover. We look for ways to improve our community. We are currently raising money to place American flags along the main streets of Westover, going from the bridge coming from Morgantown to the bridge that goes to Granville and on the Fairmont Road to the interstate. We need help to make the project possible. Any donations would be greatly appreciated. This time, we are ordering 93 flags and brackets to hold them. Flags are actually in the form of a banner and are priced at just over $8,400. We have raised a little over $4,000 at this time. Just wondered if you'd be able to help them.
Okay, what I'd like to do is, if we could put it on the work session, what they have requested is $1,000 from us, $1,000 from Jamie Sullivan and the veterans, $1,000 from WVU, and I think $1,000 from the Chamber of Commerce. I think it's, it's a really unique idea. I think the idea's great, and then they said that during certain days, maybe individuals who were either PRWs or MLAs or people who'd served in the war, that people could buy a flag and put it out there. Do you, are you aware of anything? Do you know anything else about this, or?
It's, it's in the preliminary stages.
Okay.
We've got about four grants.
Right.
Put together.
I, I think the idea is wonderful, and I really think it's something that would stand out for Westover and Granville, so, yeah, if we could put it on the work session, and I believe that, you know, that there clearly would be an interest from us, and we just wanna work with the other groups to make sure it happens. Thank you. Um, finished business. Appointments to Mon County Historic Landmarks Commission. What would you like to?
Well, we have three individuals to appoint. I will be serving on this. Barbara Rasmussen, Hannah Dye, and Jonathan Heath. We've all, and they have been interviewed and really are great candidates. We've got one more appointment, but that appointment then comes from the Historical Society.
Right.
And we have contacted one individual that has an interest, so the Historical Society meets the third Friday in May, so hopefully that appointment, and then we will begin meeting, beginning with the fiscal year.
Okay.
So, I would move that these individuals that I just named be approved for the Historical Landmarks Commission.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. We did have one other young man who we were gonna put on, was it the Planning Commission?
Matthew Ridgway.
Yes.
Interested in being on the Planning Commission.
Yes.
You can add him as, in addition to the members that are currently serving. His term would be March 31st, 2016. It's only a year, but he could be reappointed.
Okay.
That will keep the terms more equaling, some expire in '15, '16, and '17.
But we can add him?
Yes.
Okay. I would, I would move that we accept Mr. Ridgway as a member of the Planning Commission.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes.
His term would end March 31st, 2016.
Great.
Or, just to set terms, Commissioner Hawkins, I'll have you down for a term ending 5/1/16. That'd be a year, if you can reappoint. Barbara Rasmussen, 5/1/16. Hannah Dye, 5/1/16. Jonathan Heath, 5/1/17. And then the Historical Society representative will also be 5/1/17. So, stagger those.
Great. Okay. Disposition of recycling equipment. I'd asked this to be put on the agenda. As, as we are aware, the Solid Waste Authority, I believe, sold all their equipment. Is that correct? They put it out, and they did sell their equipment, which puts us in a unique situation. We do have some equipment that is being used, but there are three thing, well, actually four things that are not being used. We have three PTR vertical balers that are roughly around $7,000, and we have a chain belt conveyor that was worth $55,000. And my question is, I would like to see that we would sell this equipment because it's sitting outside in the rain, and my concern is that it will just depreciate, and I'd like to put that money into the recycling line item, but I cannot make a motion, but I did want, I did want to throw that out as?
I understand.
Yes.
My position on this is that we, I would agree with you, except one fact. Since mains have come forth and wanting a new transfer station, I believe that they should also be given the opportunity to perhaps develop their own recycling along with this transfer station. We've given indication from Bobby Doyle that it would be five to six months before we would know whether or not they would be approved in this process, but I would not like to give up the last glimmer of hope for voluntary recycling, because I believe voluntary recycling is actually the best recycling that we can have until we find out about this entity being established or not. So, I would not entertain a motion at this time.
Okay, so, since you're not entertaining motion, I'm not allowed to say anything else. I'll wait for my commission report since it then dies. Okay. New business. Oh, we have one other old business.
The internship employment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
This young man worked at Mason-Dixon Park last year. He's with the
Oh, yeah.
Davis College of Agriculture in the Recreation Parks and Tourism Division, and he is once again asking that he be provided this internship as well as employment. He will be working there as well as 4H camp and lawn and ground maintenance.
Move to employ, or to approve his employment this year at both parks.
Yeah. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Contract for Camp Muffley.
Renetta's computer crashed overnight and didn't get printed, so we'll bring that up May 6th, if that's okay.
I, I don't think there's a problem with that.
Yeah, it did, yeah. We are gonna get, yeah, she will get a new computer.
It's knowledge, so.
Yeah. It's basically putting it in a contract form. We've already approved it.
Right.
Okay. At this time, do you wanna go out? We have a new person now working in our office, Colleen Walter, and she's our new county commission secretary. Come on, Colleen, we're gonna put you on TV. So, now when they call, everyone will know who you are.
This is Colleen. She started my day, and I'm looking forward to teaching her a few things, and she's very willing to learn, and she's picking up pretty well, like ever.
Okay.
Motion to approve the employment of Colleen.
Second, discussion will be now, you know you have three kids here that you have to control. You think you, you worked?
Worked at daycare.
You worked at daycare, so that's one of the reasons why you have priority for this job, 'cause of three of us, so.
I think I can handle it.
Well, good. It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Colleen.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any reports from any elected officials? We don't even have. Okay. See, I told you this is a short meeting. Okay. Report from county commissioners.
The only thing I have to report is I did meet last night at the Fire Association, and it was a very good and productive meeting, listening to their concerns. I did inform them that I would be meeting individually with each department chief, hopefully to tour their facilities, as well as to learn exactly what their needs may be, that we can go forth and develop a good working relationship, and they were very happy to be made aware that we had provided some extra funding for them, so it went well.
Good. Okay. I have two reports, very quickly. The first is, and I always will preface this, because the three county commissioners get very concerned about this, we are not in charge of the roads. We cannot fix the roads, we cannot pave the roads. However, a meeting was established and is established for Friday. The delegate members will be meeting with members of the DOH, and then we will be informed what happens after that. I do hope it's productive. The concern is getting very great from, from me, and really from all the three county commissioners. I continually receiving reports of individuals cannot sell their house because of the roads. There's businesses concerned, and as I look with the possibility of Mylan being taken over, yea or nay, you know, here's a major company putting millions, billions of dollars, and I'm sure they would like to see roads that are accessible and correctly paved. So, I'll, I'll leave it with that. So, hopefully, something positive will come out of the meeting. The other thing is a situation, and I do wanna say thank you to a group of people. I was on my way back from Parkersburg on a bus Friday night with my tennis team, and at 10:37, there was a horrific car accident on the interstate. I cannot say enough about the volunteer fire department members, the police, the sheriff's department, all those EMS workers who went out there and, from basically 10:37 to 4:00 in the morning, we were there, to try and help, and, and for those people who live in Mon County, I think we're very fortunate to have those type of dedicated individuals. But I do wanna say to this one individual, and his name, I, I got his name, his name is Don Smith, who lives in Point Pleasant, West Virginia. I, I can't say enough about the kindness of what he did. He was right behind the, the horrific accident. He stopped an 18-wheeler on the road coming the other direction. He pulled out a fire extinguisher, put out the fire in one of the cars, pulled the guy out of the car, and just did it. When I asked him why, just 'cause someone had to do it, and it's those type of people that make West Virginia a great place to live, and just so you, for your information, I sent a letter to his family thanking him, and as I said, that's the type of person I would like to have around if my child or any member from Montague County was hurt. And hopefully, my thoughts and prayers are with the families and everyone who was affected by it, and I just, again, wanna thank all those people who helped out. It was a very traumatic and moving situation, and fortunately, only two people died, and hopefully that won't happen again. So, with that, I'll ask for a move to recess. Well, okay, we have one other.
Okay. I had an email this morning from Jenny Saline. Subject is Celebration of America Awards, Fourth of July Awards. Nominations are open. County commissioners and county staff, please feel free to nominate, and the categories are Employer of the Year, Citizen of the Year, Volunteer of the Year, Veteran of the Year, and Distinguished Montagueian.
Okay. Good. Okay. I'll ask move for recess till 11 o'clock, and then we will have our front meeting to discuss the petition to remove the representative of the estate of Luigi Bosio, aka Louis Bosio.
Move to recess till 11.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is approved. So, we're now recess till 11 o'clock. Do I have a motion to come out of recess?
Move to come out of recess.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. At this time, 11 o'clock, we will now have a hearing for petition to remove the personal representative of the estate of Luigi Bosio, aka Louis Bosio. What I would ask is to help us out, if we could say who's here for who, so we know what's going on. So, if you'd like to speak first.
Sure. My name is Josh Baker.
Okay.
And along with co-counsel Alex Shook, we represent the beneficiary Bernie Bosio.
Okay. And is anyone else?
I'm Michelle Bechtel. I'm here for the estate of Louis Bosio. Antoinette Summers, the current executor, is here with me. Amelia Bosio, the widow and primary beneficiary is also here, and Sam Bosio, another beneficiary, is also here.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay. Basically, what we'd like to do is, we have a petition for us to remove the personal representative. What I request, if possible, if someone wants to speak for the actual petition, then the group who would like to speak against the petition, and that way, I would ask if you could try and keep your minutes of quotes till about five minutes, but if we have to go on to explain anything, that's fine. We have all the material here, but we'll, we'll be very flexible. Okay? So, who wants to speak for the petition to remove?
I will.
Okay, great.
And I took the liberty, 'cause I knew
Thank you.
There were issues with the filing with all the exhibits.
Yes.
I took the liberty of
Thank you.
Doing a complete copy
Thank you.
The exhibit staff. Is there a chance I sit here?
Yeah, please. And then we'll have Michelle come up to when she speaks, so that way.
We're here today asking that the commission enter an order removing Antoinette Summers as the executrix of the estate of Louis Bosio, and that a disinterested and qualified third-party be appointed as successor. By way of background, I know we have introductions, but Louis Bosio had three children, Bernie, his son, Antoinette, his daughter, and a third son, Sam Bosio, his wife, as well, Amelia, who's here today. Louis Bosio had a will, which is attached to the petition and marked, and Mrs. Summers was appointed executrix under that will. At the time of his death, Mr. Bosio held shares in two family-owned companies. The first company is Bosio Enterprises, Inc. The second company is BHM Development Corporation. Bernie, Sam, and Louis Bosio were the three shareholders of Bosio Enterprises, and those three same individuals, along with a cousin, were the four shareholders of BHM Development Corporation. These are all family-owned corporations. The primary function of each was and is today the ownership of property in Westover and Morgantown. With respect to Bosio Enterprises, the company has been in litigation since October of 2008, before Judge Colages is here. The lawsuit was filed by Bernie against his brother Sam and against the estate. The primary issue in that lawsuit is whether or not Bosio Enterprises is subject to a buy-sell or a stock purchase agreement, which requires that upon the death of a shareholder, his shares are then sold back to the company by the estate. The position of Bernie in that lawsuit has always been that a valid buy-sell agreement existed, and that under that buy-sell agreement, Louis's shares were required to be sold back to the company at the time of his death. Sam's position has been that no such agreement exists. The estate through the executrix has testified, both at depositions and at trial in front of Judge Colages, that one, she has no knowledge whatsoever whether or not agreement existed. She doesn't know one way or the other. And two, she was not involved in the day-to-day operation of that company, Bosio Enterprises, Inc. Despite those two positions, her position in the lawsuit has been that the buy-sell agreement did not exist, so she has taken Sam's side. In fact, on all issues related to Bosio Enterprises, Inc., she has taken the side of Sam Bosio and not the side of her brother Bernie. Bernie has offered over seven figures to purchase the estate shares in the company. That offer has been refused by the executrix, and we believe it's been refused by the executrix because she is working in conjunction with her brother Sam, whose primary objective is to own a majority share in that company. In March of 2014, a trial was held in front of Judge Colages, and Judge Colages ruled in Bernie's favor. He found two things. First, that the buy-sell agreement for Bosio Enterprises did exist, and two, under that buy-sell agreement, the estate was required to sell those shares, Louis's shares, back to the company. Now, Sam Bosio has appealed that decision. The estate, despite the positions on the record, has also appealed that, that decision separately, and it's now pending before the Western Union Supreme Court of Appeals. The fact that the appeal has been filed by the estate, we believe, is even further indication that the executrix is exhibiting hostility towards Bernie and siding with Sam, and the question that has never been answered is why the estate would prefer to own shares in the company as opposed to being paid money for those shares for the beneficiaries of the estate. With respect to the second family-owned company, BHM Development, like I said, the same three shareholders plus a cousin. The primary, well, I'd say that BHM Development owned two pieces of property on St. Joseph Street near the football stadium. In March of 2011, I believe, Bernie's shares were redeemed by the company. However, in connection with the lawsuit related to Bosio Enterprises, Sam Bosio testified that the estate's shares of BHM were gifted to him for no consideration. The executrix also testified that the shares of BHM, Louis's shares, were gifted to Sam with no consideration. In response to inquiries from counsel, the estate lawyer, Michelle Bechtel, sent a letter, which is attached to our petition, along with a written stock transfer agreement, confirming that indeed those shares were gifted to Sam Bosio for no consideration. The agreement, which I've marked as BHM stock, is effective of December 31, 2012, which we believe is important. Likewise, the stock transfer agreement for BHM is notable for a couple of reasons. First, it's signed by Antoinette as the executrix of the estate. Two, it's signed by Amelia Bosio as a beneficiary of the estate. However, there's no signature line for Bernie as a beneficiary. At no point in time did the estate notify Bernie that it was gifting the shares, or did it seek his consent or his approval to, to gift those shares to Sam Bosio for no consideration. The agreement is effective at the end of 2012. Less than three months later, the, the property that BHM owned at St. Joseph Street is sold for $600,000. We believe that that money belongs to the estate, and we believe that Antoinette breached her duty as the executrix by gifting those shares to Sam for no consideration. As a result of these actions, a second lawsuit has now been filed. It's pending here in Mon County. It was filed in February of 2015. It's Bernie against the estate, against the executrix, Sam, and BHM Development. In addition to the transgressions related to Bosio Enterprises and BHM Development, the will also bequeaths a piece of real property to the executrix and Bernie as a rental property. Bernie has paid money for the upkeep of that property, and rental income has come through the executrix, and no money has passed to Bernie. Annual accountings or reports have never been filed for the estate. I believe that the fiduciary commissioner noted that in her report, which I have copies of if you do not, that, in fact, there's been no annual accountings. In sum, we believe that the executrix has breached her duty to administer the estate fairly. We believe that she's exhibited hostility towards Bernie in conjunction with Sam's, and we believe that she breached her duty by transferring those shares in BHM for no money, and subsequently, less than three months later, that property sold for $600,000. Based upon all this, we would ask that the commission enter an order removing her as executrix, and as referenced in the fiduciary commissioners' report, which recommends that you grant this petition, we'd ask for a full accounting, which includes not only monies in and out of the estate, but any monies either received or not received by Antoinette and/or the estate as it relates to that sale of BHM for $600,000. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anything you wanted to add before? Okay. Michelle, do you wanna come on down? You're more than welcome to sit next to each other, so I don't, we don't duke it out.
I don't wanna embarrass him.
That was pretty good. That was very good.
No objection.
We had, um, we had, I apologize. We have a response. You're on, I'm apologize for not filing it earlier. Obviously, it was due one day. I was in between period labels, and I thought it had been filed, so. But I'll address everything in there. But I'll address everything in there, I don't expect you to sit here and read it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think the original, right, because I was going to bring it to Judy, do you want the original? In order to keep things kind of in a nice little box, I'll try to address the same issues he did in the same order.
Sure, that would be great.
Okay. So he gave several recitation of facts regarding the companies and the ownership, and we don't dispute any of that. One important thing that he did omit is the fact that Amelia, the widow and primary beneficiary, also has no recollection of a buy-sell agreement. It's not just Ms. Summers who is taking the position against her brother regarding that issue. We believe that Judge Colages obviously disagreed, but the evidence is overwhelming. There was no copy of a buy-sell agreement. I'm not going to re-litigate the facts of that case, but there was other reasons for her disagreement that there was a buy-sell agreement. Unfortunately, Bernie, and excuse me for using the informality of a first name, there's a lot of Bosios here.
That's fine, yes.
Bernie has taken the position, if you're not with me, you're against me, which is unfortunate. It's a family dispute. He has sued his mother, his siblings, all over his deceased father's assets. His deceased father passed away in 2007 and we're still here today talking about his estate, which is certainly an unfortunate situation. I received the recommendation of the fiduciary commissioner late yesterday afternoon. Although she recommended the removal, she did not give any reasons for recommendation. I believe under the code, prior to making such a recommendation, she should probably have had an evidentiary hearing on this issue. I believe the facts of this case are void that we can flesh out here in about 15 minutes in front of this commission. So in that regard, I would ask that this case be referred to the fiduciary commissioner for an evidentiary hearing. I think that would be probably the best way to proceed. However, Ms. Summers, in her capacity as the executor of this estate, has marshaled the assets. She filed an appraisement back in 2008. Since that time, I don't believe there were any expenses to be paid. If there were, they have been paid, probably through by Mrs. Bosio. There's no liquid assets of the estate. We're just sitting here litigating, basically. The case in front of Colages has been pending since 2008. It's now at the Supreme Court, a new case has been filed. So in essence, the only thing left to do is litigate. There's been no waste of assets or anything of that nature. In terms of the BHM stock that was left in the will, that was left to Ms. Bosio as the primary beneficiary. She desired to gift that to Sam because Antoinette and Bernie had received real property. It's something she wanted to take care of for quite some time. She wasn't able to do so because the estate wasn't closed. And the estate wasn't closed because we're engaged in litigation. That was the only thing holding it up. So she went ahead and did that at her discretion. Antoinette had to sign off as the executor, but it was Ms. Bosio's desire to leave that property, to have that property go to Sam. Now, they claim that the income, and Bernie's upset because he asked to be bought out of that company several months prior for an agreed price. He came to them with the offer, they bought him out, and then they turn around and sell it several months later for a higher price. So he's upset about that, that he didn't get the benefit of that later transaction. They're claiming that the money that the estate received, he's entitled to, which may or may not be true. He's a contingent beneficiary, and Mrs. Bosio is the primary beneficiary. As a way to resolve that issue, the money is still there in BHM. We are willing to take the funds that were due the estate and set them aside into an estate account to make everybody feel better, that nothing wayward has happened or anything of that nature. So we believe that's maybe one middle ground. Something to be noted about that, however, is that all the estate expenses, which at this point are legal fees, have been borne by Mrs. Bosio personally. If there's an estate asset from which to pay legal fees, I believe those funds could be used for that purpose. Also, Ms. Summers is entitled to a commission, which she didn't plan to take. If there's estate, liquid estate assets, she would be entitled to take that or a subsequent executor would also be entitled to that fee. So I think that's also an important issue. In terms of the rental income that, from the rental property that Mr. Bosio claims he's not received, that's an interesting argument because we actually have an email from Mr. Bosio to Ms. Summers in February this year, asking for the final accounting of the rental income and the expenses which she gave to them, because they need it for tax purposes. In terms of that real property is technically still owned by the estate because it has not been closed, but they've been treating it as their own. They collect income in a joint account, they pay expenses out of a joint account, they report the income on their personal tax return. The estate's never filed a tax return because they've been, it's been more of a substance over form issue in terms of who pays tax on it. Technically, the estate owns it, but we've never accounted. We've pretended that the estate's closed and they're already getting the benefit of owning that property. So, which leads me to the annual accounting issue. No one's ever asked for an annual accounting until last year, but he's been deceased for almost seven years now. Mainly because there's been no income or expenses of the estate, there's nothing to account for. If they want us to file an annual accounting with zeros on it, we'd be happy to do so. I'll do one for each year. However, opening that can of worms, I think we go back to this whole rental income issue, which is technically an issue of the estate, or income of the estate. So if we go down that road, we're going to need, they're going to need to file them into tax returns individually. The estate's going to go back and file tax returns because they actually had income. I'm not sure it's the best use of estate assets to do that, but if they're demanding it, then we'll comply. Ms. Summers has in no way breached her fiduciary duty, she has no way acted, she may not have done what Bernie wanted her to do, but she's not, she's still acting within the best interest of the estate. As I said, Your Honors, we would ask that she continue to remain as the executor. If you are inclined to possibly remove her or you'd like more information, we would request that this matter be sent out to the fiduciary commissioner for an evidentiary hearing. We can be far more specific in evidence in that regard and she can make a report based upon that. In the event that you would desire to remove her today, Amelia, Mrs. Bosio was actually named as the primary, as the first executor. She waived that, so Ms. Summers could be. If you are inclined to remove Ms. Summers, we would, Ms. Bosio is prepared to revoke her waiver and step into the shoes as the executor. And if that would not happen, we'd ask that the sheriff would be appointed. So I'm giving you a few options. Our first is to go to fiduciary commissioner, but if you're inclined to remove her, we'd ask that. They have, I don't know who they've offered as the executor, I don't think I've ever seen anybody specific, but...
We have not offered.
There's been no one.
Okay, so the only, the only thing left to do is litigate. And just because, you know, we're not on Team Bernie doesn't mean they're not in the best, acting in the best interest of the estate.
My only question is that of the reference back for the fiduciary or the evidentiary hearing.
Yes, but you have a question about that?
Yes, I do. I mean, is this the last process that would be necessary for a decision to be made?
If the fiduciary commissioner had an evidentiary hearing?
Yes.
I think that they would make a report and we don't have to agree to the report, we could still object to it, I believe.
I understand.
Okay, yeah, but yes.
But this has not been held.
It has not been held.
Could be held.
That is correct. And actually, if I may, I called Ms. Stafford yesterday to, I didn't get the report till late to kind of see, because she didn't really give a reason, and she said basically because this is such a contentious...
I understand that.
Yeah, which is contentious.
What is your feeling on this?
Under, under the statute, she's made her final report. They, you have the ability to grant it, they have the ability to file exceptions, and then it goes up to circuit court. It's been in litigation for seven, eight years for a reason. And it's not, there's a lot more to the story than this. Her report has been made. We've been through this for eight years now. It's time to remove Antoinette. We would suggest that Cynthia Stafford, who is the fiduciary commissioner, be appointed if she's willing to serve as the disinterested third-party successor.
I have a couple of questions and then I can get a better... I do have a question on number 13 of your paper. The estate is without knowledge in regards to monies expended by the petitioner to maintain the rental property located. This is the property in question where it was supposedly sold without?
No, no.
This is a different...
This is the rental property that was bequeathed under the will to Bernie and Sam.
Okay, that was one of the questions, okay. I want to get clarification. And I do agree with you on number 31. I mean, which is, "The removal of a personal representative is addressed to Gatchin, which should be taken only when the estate within the control of such personal representative is endangered." However, I do want to respond, we did get a report from the fiduciary commissioner and there were two reasons for her recommendation. And it's Code 44-4-2, which was no annual accountings. And the other, just for your information, was 44-2-29 that required final accounting within five years. So those were her reasons for, and that's what she recommended to us.
We couldn't have done a final in five years because the estate's still in litigation and we can't close it.
Yeah, but it did also say that you had to request extensions at which time, they may request extensions, but there were no extensions requested in writing to the county commission and include a date by which the personal representative reasonably expects to make full. So those were the reasons. I'm not saying yea or nay.
I understand.
But that's the reasons why she did. Yeah, this is an unfortunate situation and I know it's both Ed and I are concerned every time we deal with situations that disrupt families. My gut reaction is if we were due the fiduciary or do the request evidential hearing, we're still going to be in the same boat six months, 12 months, a year later.
Correct.
I don't see any benefit from that. I believe eight years has been long enough to come up with something and it's clear that the sides can't agree. But you did throw out one of the recommendations that we were considering all options. Again, it would have to be a motion from my colleague to remove and then we would go down the list and follow what the will says. So that's how I'll generally say it that way.
I will go ahead and move that the removal be done.
And I second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. But now that it's been moved, now we go back and ask the question as the will says, do, since we removed her, would she retract her waiver and then, and then that way she could also do it and would not have to put up a bond?
Correct.
And that's how we look at it. So I apologize, her name is?
Amelia.
Amelia.
Okay.
E.M.I.L.I. Bosio.
Bosio, okay, so it'd be Amelia Bosio. So the recommendation would be that Amelia Bosio then become?
If I could...
Yeah, okay, sure. Go ahead.
Could we maybe ask her if she wants to be, first of all, the new executrix? And also as well, she's been involved with this lawsuit as well for eight years. It's the same, appointing the mom for the sister is the same.
Except, and you're right, but except that's how the will reads and I have to go by the way the will reads and she, we have to ask her if she, since we've now removed her, by law, we have to ask her if she wants to do it or retract. So I think that's a legitimate question though. Is she here?
She is here.
Would she, could you stand and, well, it doesn't matter, and just say, would you be willing to be the executrix, executrix, is that how you say? Of the, of this property? Would you be willing to?
What's that, sir?
Would you be willing to be the executor of this?
Okay.
And not waive, yes, and not waive your, ask for a waiver and then you would be in charge of doing it?
I'm 88 years old, but I'm going to try my best to do it, I've got a brain to do.
Okay, well, that's what we needed to find out. So you are willing to do it, which answers your question. I am sorry.
My response back to that is, and I don't want to incur the wrath here. We're going to be, we're going to be right back here in two months filing the same petition to have her removed for the same reasons that we're asking.
And that is your right and your legal way, but we must go through the step process. So that would be the next step that we would have to do, whether, you know, and I understand that, and there's no wrath at all. This is the way the law reads, so...
So move to accept the responsibility of being the executor of Amelia Bosio.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Amelia Bosio, at this time now, that would request that within, if, would 30 days be a legitimate time for everything to be moved from one area to the next? And then we'll probably see you in a couple of months. Now, did either of you want to say a closure to your...
And within that 30-day period, can we also get an accounting?
I think that's a very legit, in fact, that is an excellent mark. I think we need to get a full accounting. Request, and part of that order, I'd like to have a full accounting in the 30 days. And if it takes a little longer, if you could come back and ask for an extension. But let's guess, would you accept that as an amendment? Okay, I think that's a very wise suggestion. Is there anything else you would like to...
No, I just need to know if we are including the rental income and expenses. It is technically an asset of the estate, although...
I guess that'll be talked about, I'm sorry.
Okay, I mean, I like it as part of the order.
Yeah, well, to me, the full accounting would be everything.
Full accounting is a full accounting.
Would be everything, even if it's put on the side of it as we've done in the past. So at least we know it's out there, okay? Is there any other questions? I hope that we can get this resolved and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And hopefully we won't see you again, but we may see you again. I have a feeling. I know, I have a feeling. But we wanted to follow the law, so that way we followed the steps. Thank you. I do want to announce that next week, we will not have a meeting on April 29th, but we will reconvene again on May 6th and have our formal meeting at that time. If there's no other business...
Move to adjourn.
Okay, and I second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.